I need you to fill that out please.
For?
The C.
She's gonna be here tonight?
Yeah.
No way. What's that work for?
Because one time it was her fault, or twice, and then other times it was our fault, so.
Oh, is she your friend?
No. No.
She is, that's why I'm doing it.
I know she is.
Well, we're twins.
Today's what, the fifth, right?
Yes.
Correct. Did you realize that, uh, Groundhog Day was, the date was oh two oh two, two oh two oh?
Two oh two oh.
One of the kids, one of the kids at the station says, "Yeah, that'll happen again, Chief." I said, "Not in my lifetime it won't." It's not gonna happen till oh three oh three, that three oh three oh. I said, "It's, it's a whole more time." Ain't gonna happen in your lifetime either. Yeah, well, no, it won't. Come here in so early, Chief.
You know, you're in a weird situation here. Do you sit down, grab a bite to eat, or just?
Yeah.
Just come here early?
My problem, my problem is I can grab a bite to eat and I can sit down in a chair. And if I recline it just the right way.
Sandman, not red.
Oh, that is really.
And I, 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 because it's me, I bought, um, I got a, I got a power tilt on my recliner also, so I pick it up like this, nice, nice. And I'm in the perfect neutral position. It's great.
I love falling nuts.
Alright, so the video feed is on, so no picking your nose or anything, and leave the mics off until you're ready then.
Yes, Dad.
It's just about the technique. Well, feel free. Just warning you that they made a conflict.
Shall we put a little, shall we put a little, um, sign in front of somebody?
Uh, she's not gonna be here tonight.
Okay.
But even if you put a sign on.
Mm-hmm. Do I have to sign it on the bottom?
Hey, here comes Mr. Red.
He's just full of, he's just full of confidence tonight.
Eddie looking a little long in the face.
Here in my face.
Uh, you're on the other side of Russell.
This side?
Right here.
Right here.
How did you get this?
He's Johnny.
That's so cool. Just check for me, please.
Eddie's right here. So Jenny's not here, I'll move him. You can sit there, Eddie, I don't care. Go, I really don't care. I'd have to move because Jane's gonna sit.
Where's Jane going?
Yeah, right there.
Oh, see, you two are switching.
We're switching. I'm over here. You're killing me, Eddie, you're killing me. So when's Scotty gonna move?
I don't know. Why don't you put a blanket for him?
Oh, okay.
I can't believe that.
Oh, thank you. Yep. Oh, you know what, I'm gonna have to sign these because he's a double sided. I don't know, let me go to scan them and if that's gonna mess up.
You know, if you don't have anything better to do, it's really interesting to come on planning board meetings.
What was it?
When the meeting is over, the chairman of the board, I'm sorry, the acting planner.
He's not acting, he is a planner.
Oh, yes, well, Ron Flynn
Oh.
Won't make a decision unless he looks at him. So it's like, he waits to be told what to say. Pretty interesting. So he says to me, when the meeting is over, so, he had nothing better to do to hang out here tonight? And I went, hey, I'm a taxpayer, I can some of these things. I'm surprised he took it. He took it because he was told to take it. I'm telling you.
I know that.
You need to go to these places.
Oh.
It's, it's, it's painful to me.
Kind of error is this? New year's error?
So we had an issue with the minutes.
Hmm.
They didn't get recorded, them and the following month, and so they...
So everybody's gonna sign that?
No, just you, so I can re-record it, just you.
What do you call that error?
Scrivener's.
What?
Scrivener's error.
Where, where is the word? Is it here?
It's a writer's.
Oh.
It's a typo.
What's it supposed to be? What is the word supposed to be?
Scrivener.
Scrivener?
Yes.
Yeah.
As in a scribe.
Got it, got it, okay.
You, you get this on your, um, uh, computer each morning, all these?
No, he looks into Spelvoris.
No, we have a special class in law. They have to teach us a secret set of words that your morals don't know.
I, I went to the doctors the other day because they had an MRI.
How else do you bill three, four, five hundred dollars an hour? People can't know what you're talking about.
I, I, I went to the doctors the other day. I got a MRI on my back. So the doctor calls me up and she's, she's obviously reading right from the report. I'm reading, she's reading right from the report, and she's Indian. So I'm having a little bit of trouble understanding. I said, can I get a copy of that? And she's, "Oh, absolutely," so I drive down and get it. And then I went to go talk to a friend of mine, because I couldn't, un, like, the words were bigger than, you know, my, my vocabulary.
How's your shoulder doing, Keith?
Yeah, come on, you ain't got a nice coat like that. Your father would've gave me one.
Oh, well, that.
Next time I order them, but you better wear it.
That's right.
It really wears.
Three, three, three and four.
Well, this is a trade.
No, no, don't, um, you don't have to give me a jacket. Um, Billy gave me two different shirts for crystal climbers. He goes, "Why don't you ever wear the shirt, Chief?" I said, "Well, you only wear them on Thursdays." He goes, "Yeah." I said, "I only come in on Saturdays." I said, "I'll wear them, but I don't want to break any rules." So you feeling any better? Yep. I thought I told you that.
No, you never told me, she told me.
Oh.
She said they called her, I guess, J and J materials.
Mm-hmm.
You know, those are the people that had the account or the bookkeeper that embezzled almost nine and a half thousand.
Yeah, a couple of years ago.
Yep.
And the only reason they got caught is because the book being here, wanted to order. She would've never got caught, had so much business they do.
Yeah, she.
I'm missing like a hundred dollars.
He, he, um, he, he came over to the, the boss came over to the property a couple, a couple weeks ago. Came down with his helicopter. They're gonna, it looks like they're gonna pay the whole yard. They, they moved all our material over and took out, they took out all of our, uh, display, um, corners there. And according to Kathy and Jimmy, they're gonna, they're just waiting probably a month or so, they're gonna do a call, see if they want to come back, want to come to work, which I said I would. I give them a shot.
Yeah. Smart for them, smart.
Denise, do you remember?
Brenda San Jose?
Brenda, Brenda Laranja? From school? She passed away last night.
Oh, my God.
She's had that for zing really, really bad.
Oh, wow.
And I read it to her daughter. She left her away. She had like a look on her face, "Sam, can you know what's up?" She says, "Oh, my mom was there." She was, she, um...
She was very active at six.
Oh, yeah, she, um... She had to go to sleep, so she got up. Never mind. She got up to go bed. She sent her candle. There's a nice affair. So she blew on the set out. So she had one in her face, but she's been at the top. It just, I guess it's too much.
Was she in the hospital?
Yes. It's been since, uh, January. I grew up with her. Her father used to be the fire chief. So are you?
I was here.
Yeah, then, uh, before they come here, they're supposed to get recognition.
The one to the nation. I have to rescue myself. Recuse myself. So Denise, you gonna have coffee with me sometime? Okay.
Somebody else came in. For some reason, they submitted a copy of this to us that said March fifth.
Oh, yeah.
Everybody else got dates that said March fourth. So this is deficient, and I have to send out a letter.
He's not retired.
Alright, thank you, sir, appreciate it, have a good night.
No, they're looking to consolidate Hopkinsville, you have to meet the circle. E two central. Well, the one thing I will say, you, you probably can't find, I've had a guy in the town to run the department. We don't have a lot left. Well, I'm not, Western County's not gonna get involved, I can almost guarantee that. But Hopkinsville just doesn't have a lot of colleagues. It's a very small group. Matter of fact, my name wasn't even mentioned, I don't know how it was told.
No, yes, it was.
It was?
Yeah. It's from what?
One of the comrades.
Yes, it was.
Okay.
Alright, I'm just asking.
How many, how many comrades do you have?
Handful. Six or seven active, yeah. If you take out the guys in my car, Dean's.
Oh, yeah.
In, I've been associated with Hopkinsville for twenty years now. And there is a boatload of people that we have brought in, trained, sent to school, and they get a full-time job. Under the firebox. It is what it is. They, they find a job, they like the job. They get a full-time job.
Can't blame you.
Well, we, we've done some stuff in the press, we've done some stuff at the high school. Right now, Hope Jackson's got several. But, um, they just, one of their guys just gone on, he starts, uh, the academy march in New York City. Their deputy chief is a full-timer in New York City. He gets down. Full-timer in New York. Yeah. See, they work a two, two. Well, they, they do a two, two and four in, in pro, in, in New York City. But because he lives in Rhode Island, so he got a partner, and they flip-flop, so he goes down and does a twenty-four. Comes back for three days, goes back, does another twenty-four. So he's, he's only down there for one day, three days off. He's got a economical vehicle to take him back to port to work, so. We, uh, do you know the Leo Laranja from high school? Brenda Laranja Reed. He lives next door with Dookey Slod on the Cedar Tree.
Is Nancy still in the room?
Yep. Mm-hmm. Uh, yes. Um, that I wasn't, that I didn't know. I did not know. Yes, they made a, they made a in, they made an in. They made a, um, sixty-five, Nancy's got sixty-seven. So her mother's gotta be in the ratings. She was a gout. Did you go to school with us?
Yes. Before we, we start, everybody should remember to turn your microphones on. Um, remember we're on video. Just when, when Bob starts, everybody needs to turn their mics on so that everybody can hear. What? Yes.
So she'll be in.
He came on with a vengeance. Either that or I'm having hot flashes.
Okay, at this time here, I'd like to call the County Zoning Board a review to order. And, uh, I'd also like to point out, fire exits are to our front, to your rear, the exits to my rear will take you into the building, so the two fire exits are to your rear. Uh, at this time here, I'd like to have the secretary, police caller roll.
Barbara?
Yeah.
Denise DeGreed?
Here.
Uh, Keith Pudier?
Here.
Lenny Doig?
Yeah.
Russ Lockley? Ed Ionati?
Yeah.
Okay, also, I'd like to have a motion to approve the minutes from January eighth, two thousand and twenty.
So moved?
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays, ayes, ahs. Okay, at this time here, I'd like to ratify, uh, the decisions from last month. Dennis Coria, uh, that's an assesses plot map, uh, three fourteen lot fifteen point two, six, seven, eighty-three, flat river road. Zones are fine. Um, single family resident, same applicant is seeking a special use permit to sell firewood, teach yoga, and archi- architectural classes, and operate account to breed and sell Germanian pigs as pets. Uh, do I have a motion to ratify that, uh, application?
So moved.
Okay, motion's made, motion's seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Nays, ayes, ahs. Okay, the next application was, uh, Pettigrew Properties, oh, sick. Um, applicant is seeking a special use permit to replace the existing family dwelling with a new single-family dwelling, needing all the DRC dimensional requirements. So I have a motion to ratify this, uh, application.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made, seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays, ayes, ahs. Okay, um, all business, uh, Kelly.
Gustin.
Guaram.
Gustin.
Gustin. Uh, is the applicant here? Okay, uh, we continue this. Uh, is there anything further you'd like to add to this?
Um, I have a witness who is supposed to be held in, she's committed to a meeting in Riverside to testify that the house was built in nineteen fifty's was a.
We can bump this to the bottom of the agenda.
Okay, we'll bump it to the bottom of the agenda. Thank you. Okay, also, I'd like to bring up tonight, on the zoning board of appeals, a violation hearing of Chattel on Hammett Road. At this time here, I'm gonna turn the meeting over to our zoning enforcement officer, uh, and planner, uh, to explain the logistics on this, because I understand this is being held in court.
Yeah, this, uh, matter has been in Superior Court on a parallel track, um, because the respondent raised issues relating claiming a non-conforming use on the property, which can only be resolved in Superior Court. Uh, at this point, uh, a negotiated order has been entered in Superior Court, uh, giving the respondent until a date in June to do some cleanup on the site and start moving the stored wood and other materials off of the property. So at this point, I would recommend that this matter be continued to, I would guess, the July meeting, so that we can, uh, observe compliance with that court order.
If we even went to August, then everything should be all done, right?
I, I would hope that we have full compliance with the Superior Court order. Um, all I advised the, um, the attorney on the other side was that I would ask that this be continued for at least two months. They have until June to comply with the order. If you would like to continue it beyond that, that is your prerogative.
Well, I'd like the all the neighbors to be able to know how this came handling, and getting plenty of notice, and just keep on, like you suggested, just keep on putting it off, let's put it to a definite date. So I would say the first Wednesday in July or August would be an ample date if the board agrees.
Well, they're supposed to have everything situated by June, correct?
By June, yes.
By June, so if we come back in July with this issue, that should, I mean, they're supposed to have it finished.
I, I'm, I'm hoping there will be no need to come back for this again, so, yes, uh...
Miss, well... Well, our July meeting, the first of July is, um, it's, I want to say it's the week of the fourth, because it's before the fourth, so I don't know if that's gonna affect anybody's scheduling, or...
If, if the board wants to bump it to August, that's perfectly fine with me.
I think that may be wise.
Okay.
Alright, so, uh, any other discussion, but, but have any other questions?
We need to make sure we put a date certain on the record.
Date certain is August fifth.
August fifth, two thousand and twenty. Okay. Uh, do I have a motion on the floor to, uh, review this, uh, appeal on August fifth?
Mister, Mister Chairman, I make a motion, we continue this, uh, appeal till August the twentieth. I'm sorry, August the fifth, twenty twenty.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion made, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Nays, ayes, ahs. Okay, also, uh, just to help people out tonight, uh, the matter of the guy at Sherwood Valley, uh, that has, uh, requested to, to continue that, uh, next month.
March fourth.
March fourth, two thousand and twenty. Okay, and also, I'd like to have a motion on the floor to extend this to March fourth.
Mister Chairman, I make a motion, we, uh, continue the Sherwood Valley zoning hearing until March the fourth, two thousand and twenty.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Nays, ayes, ahs. Okay, do I have any other, uh...
Rodriguez, the next application also needs to be continued.
Which one?
Carlos Rodriguez, ACR Investments. It's the one right below it.
Okay, we also have the Alcana Carlos Rodriguez, uh, wishes to have that, uh, uh, extended to what, March fifth, that's what the date is?
March fourth.
March fourth, two thousand and twenty. Uh, do I have a motion on the floor to, to do that?
Mister Chairman, I make a motion, we continue the Carlos Rodriguez application until March the fourth.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays, ayes, ahs. Okay, uh, next, I'll have the secretary read the next application in front of us.
The owner applicant is Christopher J. Cole, the location is AP seventy-seven lot fifty-eight, seven, seven Remington Farm Drive, zone is R twenty. Applicant seeks a dimensional variance to build a shed with a side yard setback of five feet, where fifteen is required, and to install a six-foot fence where a height limit of four foot is required.
Is the applicant here, please? Can you please step up to the podium?
Flip the switch on the mic up. Down, there you go.
Okay, can you please give me your full name and address for the record?
Yes, my first name is Christopher, last name is Cole, and, uh, address is seventy-seven Remington Farm Drive.
Okay. Uh, I'm gonna ask you to raise your right hand. You swear to tell the whole truth, not to butt the truth in front of the squad?
Yes.
Okay. Please present, or explain to me exactly what you'd like to do, sir.
Uh, the, the backyard, I am not able to build a shed because of the way that the yard slopes, the only options I have are the side yard or the side yard on the s- the side street, but that makes it a front yard. So I was told that I have to come in front for a variance on that.
Okay, there was a question about a fence here, Mike.
I would also like to put a six-foot fence where you're only allowed to do, uh, four foot.
Alright, so you want to put a six-foot fence up in the front?
It's a side.
On the side, is this a corner lot?
Yes.
So it's got frontage on two street, on both sides.
It fronts on Remington and Hunter's Crossing.
Yes.
Uh, so if the drawing that we have here, uh, Hunter's Crossing is at the bottom, right? Uh, Remington would be along the right-hand side where the driveway goes. Um, the fence would fence the side front on, uh, Hunter's Crossing Road. Um, the fence would fence the side front on, uh, Hunter's Crossing Road. Um, based on our ordinance, a corner lot like this technically has two front yards, so that fence would be limited to four feet high. Um, he's asked to have a, a six-foot high, uh, fence over there. Uh, likewise, he's, um, asked to put in a shed. So we have two different dimensional variances going here, one for a shed and one for a fence. The shed, uh, his primary request is in the red location up at the northern property boundary. His secondary request would be the black location down at the southern, uh, property boundary.
So the house is actually oriented for Remington Farm and not Hunter's Crossing?
Correct. The driveway is on Remington Farm.
Okay. Okay, now, if he put it where he liked to put it, uh, what's the problem?
Uh, the setbacks in the side yard are the setbacks for a house, which is fifteen feet.
And we've done many of them, five to seven feet apart, uh, from it. And, yeah, five is usually what you want. Yeah. Nothing less than five.
Uh, as, as I indicated in my memo, for an eighty-foot shed, which he's proposing, a five-foot setback would be the appropriate setback if it were in the backyard. But because it's in the side yard, it has a larger setback requirement.
The red dot represents the shed, the red square on your picture?
That's my primary.
Yeah, he's given you an alternative location down by, uh, Hunter's Crossing Road, which is the black box. Uh, but I have, I have, I have actually have less of a problem with his first request up on the...
I did myself also.
The northern boundary, so I prefer to see it go there. And if it's gonna be behind the fence, which he is allowed to have a six-foot fence there, you're not gonna see much of the shed anyway. So, uh, there really isn't a problem with a five-foot setback there.
Okay, now, I, let's, uh, another board member had a question about that. I don't have a problem with the shed being located there. Now, what about the fence?
Uh, because the yard along Hunter's Crossing qualifies as a front yard, there's a four-foot height limit on fences in a front yard.
Right, I agree.
He has asked for six. Um, my recommendation has been, given the nature and layout of the corner lot, that, uh, I would recommend that we require the fence to be pulled back ten feet off of the sidewalk, and then allow him to have the, the six feet for some backyard privacy, without encroaching too much onto the, the sidewalk and street.
Safety-wise, I agree.
I have a question.
Please.
Um, have you looked in to see if there are restrictive covenants for Hunter's Crossing that would limit fence height?
I, I have not.
I, I neither.
I, I can't enforce HOA restrictive covenants anyway.
No, I know, but you gotta, he's got another problem if there's restricted covenants and he's in violation.
They have it in HOA.
But if, if they are, it's only legal to it, because they're all good, right?
No.
That's a good point.
Right, a lot of, a lot of times, they don't even know what they are. I mean, they're, they're recorded when they do the plat, and then nobody looks at them ever again until, like what they had in Cranston with the pony in the backyard.
I know when they built that, um, when they built those, started building those homes, those were still in the old Washington Fire District, and, uh, we weren't aware of any, any covenant at the time. There was no organization. We were just dealing with the individual, um, builders that were building it, and then the homeowners picked them up after.
Well, the applicant might be, he might be well advised to check the land records to see if there are any covenants recorded in your chain of title. And if there aren't, then you can go with the approval of the board.
I, I am not. And there's people directly across from me that have exactly what I want, exactly how I want.
Yeah, but that doesn't mean it's correct. That does not, you know.
Correct.
So all we're just doing is putting, please be advised that, because somebody could come up in the future and say, yours is incorrect, you're gonna tear it down.
Yeah, I put out twenty-three letters through the neighborhood.
Because, like he said, you gotta go to your closing, and get your closing attorney and say, is there something on my deed that makes me pertain to any special? He can stipulate that, right? Right. But we can't overrule. Right.
Right, he proceeds at his own peril.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Is there anything else anybody would like to add? Would you be agreeable to having that ten-foot setback on the, um, on the Hunter's Crossing street?
From the sidewalk?
Location of the shed, keeping the fence ten feet off the sidewalk on Hunter's Crossing Drive.
Uh, again, that's my recommendation. If the board wishes to do something else, that's, that's your prerogative.
If we have a six-foot fence on the street side, he's got a corner lot.
On the, on the safety side, I, I, I think it's a good idea, however, um, it's pretty far back from the corner. I see what you're getting to when you come down, um, Remington Farm, you're gonna take a left-hand turn out to Hunter's Crossing to get out to Station Street. You wanna be able to see something, you don't have to block it. That sets back pretty far, so.
You can also...
That's all over eighty feet.
That's a major.
At the corner, you can always drop a corner down to four, you know, to, to four foot. You know what I mean?
You know what, I, I'm, I'm saying, you, like, the distance between where it is now and the actual corner
Right.
is a great distance, so it's, I don't think it's really a problem. I think putting it up towards the sidewalk would be fine if that's exactly... Well, I'd say maybe you go from ten feet down to seven feet, that's...
Well, wait a minute, are you only planning to put it where that red dotted line is there?
No, the red dotted line was my approximation of ten feet in. He was gonna put it right on the sidewalk.
Actually, no, I was gonna come four feet in.
Oh, okay, there you go.
I was gonna come four feet in, which is what I was told I was required.
Is that where your property line is?
Um, the property line, I believe, is right at the sidewalk.
It does, okay.
Now, were you gonna bring the fence all the way up to Remington, or only?
No.
Only to the side of the house?
To the side of the house.
Oh, I don't see any problem with six foot.
Come right in.
And that's setback over a hundred, oh, eighty feet.
Four feet, four feet in from the side.
That's what the, the stipulations were in, that I was going by. That's what I was told to, that we had to do.
May I ask a question?
Please.
Uh, what do you need the fence for?
Privacy for the, the, where the, the porch is in the back, the deck. And on the back, the other house is right there, their driveway. So I was just gonna run it around the back.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and I don't have no problem with the four feet, with the fence coming in four feet. And it's gonna be how tall, six feet tall?
Six foot.
But we're only allowed four feet in that area, correct? In height, Brian?
Four front. What?
We only allow four feet in height.
Well, mm, I mean, if, if you're going to allow the six feet on the side along Remington, there's no reason not to allow the six feet to be brought in to tie that, the house in. Um...
I think you're gonna find that that rule applies, not rule, that, that situation applies to other houses in that, in that. So it's not gonna be out of, out of the ordinary to see the fence that long.
Right, I, I, I don't disagree with it. I mean, normally, we allow people with the six-foot fences on a normal lot to tie into the front corner of their houses at six feet, just as he's, um, proposing.
Anybody else? Okay, I'm gonna ask you to take a seat, see if there's anybody here that'd like to speak on this application. Does anybody here like to speak, just on the application in general, or anybody in favor of the application? Or anybody have any other questions on the application, or disapprove? Okay, this time here, I see nobody would like to speak on this application. So I'd like to have a motion to vote on this application tonight. Do I have a motion in front of us, somebody would like to make?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, so, uh, I have a motion, and if you all vote on this, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Ayes, aye. Okay. Let's do a rule call vote on this application as presented with no stipulation. Am I correct?
Well, I, I think we ought, there, there are two separate variances. You're granting of, or being asked to grant a, um, variance for a five-foot setback for the shed from the northern property boundary in the side yard. And you're being asked to grant a variance for fence height along, uh, Remington, or excuse me, along Hunter's Crossing and tying back into the, the front of the house from four feet to six feet.
All right, but I can tie them both in together.
Yep, and the stipulation is that that fence be set back a minimum of four feet from the sidewalk on Hunter's Crossing Road.
All right. Uh, as presented, Eddie, how do you vote on this application?
Approve.
Russ? Are we voting on the shed? We're gonna vote on, on all of it as presented. So bolt them together? Yes. Um, approve as presented. I also approve as presented. Denise?
Uh, there is a stipulation on the four feet, right?
The four feet. No, that's how we present.
That's how we presented it?
Presented, four feet.
Approved as, as presented.
Okay, uh, Keith? Approved as presented, okay. Uh, at this time here, application is approved as presented. Okay, can the secretary please read the next application for the record?
Next applicant is Seth Shapiro. Owner is Samuel Shapiro and Suellen Shapiro. Location is AP fifty, lot seventeen Sharon Drive. Zone is R twenty. Applicant seeks dimensional variances to build a fifty by forty-two by twenty-eight point eight home with a twenty-foot rear yard setback where forty is required, and a fifteen-foot yard setback where twenty is required.
Okay, is the applicant here, please?
I, I would just note before we start that the staff report had an error, um, for the zone on this. Somehow they, I left in VRC, this is an R twenty zone. Um, so just make a correction on that.
Okay, please give your full name and address.
I'm Seth Shapiro, thirty-three Sharon Drive.
Okay, uh, ask you to raise your right hand. You swear to tell the whole truth and not butt the truth in front of this board?
Yes.
Okay, explain to me in your words what you'd like to do.
So, we're asking for a, um, setback on the rear property line, um, which I have a letter from the abbotter with, um, who isn't appealing it or opposed to it. Um, this would allow us to build the structure into the ground a little bit and provide it, uh, coverage from the road for the people driving by.
So this is gonna be a whole separate structure from your house?
There is nothing on the property right now.
There is nothing on the property?
Correct.
All right, so this lot already exists, it's a pre-existing lot?
Yes.
Is that correct, Brian?
Yes, this is a, this is a vacant lot of record.
Vacant lot of record. And, uh, the only problem is the setback in the rear?
So, I'm asking, excuse me, I'm asking for a five-foot relief on the front corner of the property, which would allow the back corner of the structure to conform to the twenty-foot setback. And then I'm asking for a reduction in the rear setback, so that we can push the structure back towards the...
You need a reduction in the rear, and then you also want one in the front.
The front corner.
So on, on the drawing that's up on the screen now, the dash line is the building envelope, the, the required setbacks. The yellow square is the proposed location of the structure.
Now, why wouldn't you wanna put it in the working envelope?
To be quite honest, originally, I was planning on building a garage. Just a garage with a loft space above it. Unfortunately, that, that's not allowed, so... And the setbacks on that would have been ten foot, uh, on both the rear and the side.
Okay, I understand you wanted to build a garage by itself, and that's not allowed, but I still don't understand why you would want to build within the working envelope.
I'm trying to push the structure as far back from the street to give it some coverage, and also to build it into the slope of the land.
So Sharon Drive is to the left?
Correct.
Correct.
And the parcel behind is all designated open space.
So on that map right there, Sharon Drive is where?
At the, uh, the left-hand side of the map.
So you're gonna be all the way to the back, but you're not gonna leave any backyard at all?
There'd be twenty feet of backyard space, and the space behind that is all designated open space.
Um, that's not entirely accurate. There, that parcel is currently in for development plan review for a, a new development. Um, as, uh, let's see. Uh, did that drawing knock, the drawing is actually in your packets, um, uh, at the bottom of page eleven.
Okay, now... That's not, that's, right here, that's not... Okay, but what, what I'm asking is, you're only gonna have a twenty, you're gonna put this all the way in the back, and if you, this is gonna be a separate structure, I wouldn't want my backyard to only be twenty feet.
Essentially, I'm trying to create a larger front yard.
Why?
So I live across the street. I'm basically trying to create, to hide the structure, like, into the earth on the back edge of the property, to do landscaping around it, to make it less visible from the street.
So you have a house across the street from this lot?
That's where I live, correct?
And so this is gonna be a single-family home?
Correct, it's, it, it was designated like a, a carriage house with a loft space above it, one bedroom above it.
So the thing, this is not what you're gonna build?
No, that's exactly.
So you're gonna build a garage with a loft above it?
Correct.
Okay.
And there's the floor plan, the, the floor plans on the second page of that.
No, 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 I got that.
Brian, why can't you build a garage on the, on a lot that's across?
It's a storage structure, it's an ex, you can't have an accessory structure without the principal structure. In this case, the principal structure is a home. Otherwise, the principal use becomes storage, and that's not permitted in a residential zone.
I think there's something like that on Black Rock Road.
Might be. Right behind the rock.
Right behind the rock?
Yeah. You're talking about the old valley construction building?
No, I'm talking about the accessory structure that was put up there, that there was no principles for.
But you, you did have a principal structure there. You had a principal structure that was a non-conforming commercial use. And yes, they promised to put up a home there and never did.
And that's not before. So if you drove by it, you're gonna look, you're gonna look at that, it's gonna look more like a garage than a house?
Well, it's gonna be, that's one of the other reasons I wanted to put it back further, so it's set into the ground. Cause the grade on the property goes, oh, fairly steep from the street.
I still have a problem with the, only the twenty feet in the backyard. Because if someday, this is gonna turn over, I know, to somebody to do a single-family home, and, uh, they're not gonna have any backyard.
So, can I ask a hypothetical question then?
Yeah.
What if I decided later on to build a single-family home in the middle of that property, in the designated area that's shown, and this would then become a detached garage? It would conform to the setbacks, which would, it would actually be more than conforming to the setbacks of a detached structure on a, on a primary. I'm sorry? No, I underst- I understand.
Well, so you're saying you wanna put this garage up and then put a house up in the envelope that's a correct area? Is that what you're saying? I don't quite get it.
No, I'm saying that, um, it's, I, I, that was, that was my original intent, was to put up a garage and then put up a single-family eventually. But I can't do that, so I have to do everything all at once, is what I'm being told.
Just remember, if, if that's the case, and he does put up a single-family house on it, you're gonna have to gut the dwelling unit out of this structure.
I, I understand.
Cause you can't have two detached living structures on a single lot under twenty acres.
You'd have to go back to just an open loft. You wouldn't wanna bring that back another ten or twenty feet, so that you've got, have a backyard there?
No, because the front yard is mostly where I, I think I would do anything anyway.
I mean, if you were, say, if you had a home there, and you wanna have the cookout in your front yard, not your backyard? Cause you can't, you don't have enough room in your backyard for a future? I'm saying for the future, somebody else does wanna use that as a residence.
I, I understand what you're saying.
It's really nice to watch you think that if you can try five lyrics.
It's, it's a substantial slope, and, and I'm trying to accomplish building it into.
Nope, there they go. They look at the contour lines.
Okay, yep.
So, would you, would you build it into the hill, so basically the residential part of the building would be a walkout on, on the?
I would try and build it into, excuse me, into the ground as much as possible. I don't think it would be exactly a walkout, um, but it would be a good, a good height into the ground. And use the, use the foundation as the retaining and, yeah.
Do you have this staked out on how, where you're gonna put it?
Uh...
You could do that, though?
Yeah, I mean, I've gone, I've gone out there and measured it, I spoke to the neighbor, the abutter to the right, uh, Tom, and he's fine. I met him last week, um, I've spoken to the abutter in the rear.
I'd like to go out and take a look at this, have you staked this out? But red stakes are all four corners. And also, I'd like to see the property lines.
The property lines are, are noted and, uh, and staked. So, that's, they're already staked, I had.
It goes right up there, and I, I can read right on the property line.
Yes, sir. I had to have a survey done, and I had to have a septic design done, and so all of that's been prepared.
I think that's, you know, but I would like to see this staked out. So, I'd go up there and take a look at right exactly where.
Come by tomorrow morning.
All right, I don't think we'll go, I'll go tomorrow morning, I'll go take a look at this. I don't know how the other board members feel. Would, would they like to go out and take a look at this? All right, uh, any other questions from the board? Uh, councilor? Okay, uh, okay, I'm gonna ask you to take a seat, please.
Okay.
Okay, is anybody here would like to speak on this application, for or against this application? Okay, this time.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, we take the matter under advisement and then the decision in reasonable time.
Okay, I have, uh, under advisement, and, and, uh, I have a seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it.
We, we do need.
Okay, we're gonna continue this to...
I think you're going where I'm going, so.
Okay, we're gonna continue this to the first Wednesday of next month, which is March fifth, on my clock.
March fourth.
Okay.
One, one thing that might be interesting is to find out the grade of that yard, to, what the slope is.
Well, they're gonna bring it down, but he is going to, my understanding, the elevation that's existing right there should be right on the, I should be able to check it right out.
All right.
Turn it off. Those, these, uh, these contour lines here are at two-foot intervals, so, uh, you know, it's probably from the street to four, six, eight, ten, twelve. And then, so, you're going from two sixty-three, oops, uh, at the beginning. Going from two sixty-three here to two seventy-nine in the last contour at the back of the lot. Over a distance of a hundred and seventy feet.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, so we're gonna continue that to next month, uh, next application, please.
Next applicant is Americo Gravino. The location of the property is AP three eighteen, lot fifty-six, twenty acres of Pine Road, zone is RR two. Applicant seeks a dimensional variance to build a ten-by-ten addition with an eight-foot side yard setback where thirteen is required and a special use permit to expand a non-conforming structure.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, my name is Joseph Minera. Uh, I'm an attorney, I have offices in Cranston, Rhode Island, and please don't hold that against me. Um, I'm actually Mr. Green's father's lawyer, but he's asked me to represent him tonight before the, for the zoning board. Um, Mr. Gravino bought this property in two thousand sixteen. Uh, the house was constructed in nineteen fifty-four. Uh, it predates zoning and coventry. This is not a non-conforming use, it's a non-conforming structure. Uh, all he wishes to do is to put on an addition in the back of the property where there's a currently existing deck. Uh, the deck is presently ten by ten. He proposes to enclose it, not to enlarge it, just to enclose it, uh, so that he can extend his bedroom. There's gonna be no bathrooms put in there, anything like that. It's just gonna be an, uh, an extension of the property, uh, so he can add to his bedroom. Um, and we're here because we need a special use permit because of a side yard setback.
Okay, at this time, I'm gonna hold you up.
Sure.
Uh, can I have the gentleman's full name and address?
It's, uh, Americo Gravino and twenty acres of Pine Road.
Okay, at this time here, since you're gonna give testimony, sir, I'm gonna ask you both to raise your hand, so I can swear you both then. You swear to tell the truth, not to put the truth in front of this board?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, continues.
Excuse me, Attorney Mayor, can you please state your address for the record?
Uh, my address is ten six two Reservoir Avenue, Cranston, Rhode Island, that's my business address.
Thank you.
And Mr. Green will obviously reside to the property question. Um, as I stated, he intends to put, to enclose the existing deck. Now, this deck was, um, on the property, um, prior to the time he bought it, he did not add this, this deck. It's probably been there by looking at some of the photos a very long period of time. Uh, looking at the radius map, most of the, uh, houses there are all on small lots. Uh, this particular piece of property is about eighty-three hundred square feet. We're not changing, uh, the setback, because we're, we're gonna do this enclosure within the footprint of the existing deck, not really adding to this. Um, the front of the property, actually, the, the side of the property is eight feet anyhow from, from the sideline. Uh, it's a very minor request, um, and it's basically what they call a bump out, where he's just acting to, uh, enclose an existing deck, uh, existing deck, uh, so they can, can just enlarge the bedroom. But that's really all there is to this application. Any questions for Mr. Gravino or myself, or we'll have to answer anything they'd like to do.
So, you're saying the hardship is what?
Well, it's a special use permit. Uh, we're not looking for a dimensional variance or, um, special use variance, this is, this is just a use, a special permit, uh, because I think we comply with some of the, with the ordinance. Uh, we're asking simply to enclose, uh, an existing deck. We are in a residential zone. Um, we're not doing something that's putting a restaurant into a residential area. This is a residential use that's approved in an RR two zone. Um, we're, we're here for a setback relief.
So, that deck, once you enclose, it's gonna be extending the bedroom?
Yes.
It's just thinking a bigger, you're not adding a bedroom?
No, it's just gonna make it a bigger master.
Is this house on the water?
Yes.
So, when you say the back of the house, are you talking the water side or the other side?
Yes, the water side.
Well, that's the first time I ever preferred to call it backyard.
Everybody that comes to the water side, that's the one.
Really?
Yeah, they said that for planning permission two weeks ago, they're calling it water side.
Yeah, that's the.
Sorry, now, how close you gonna be to the water?
No closer than the, yeah. Nothing's changing, they're just, they're always enclosing. Three walls on the roof.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, but aren't you gonna still use the sta, well, you can't use the stairway if you enclose it?
Um, there's no, there's no stairway to the deck.
You access it from that room that I'm gonna make bigger, so... Yeah, exactly, yeah.
I'm a little confused, on your application, you say you're asking for a dimensional variance. And your lawyer's saying you're just asking for a special use permit, so which one is it?
It, it's both a dimensional variance for the setback relief. We don't know, we were unable to find any permits for decks, and I'm always very leery of decks when I'm not able to find permits as to whether or not they were built legally when they were built. Um, and it's a special use permit because you are expanding a non-conforming structure, which by our ordinance requires a special use permit.
All he's doing is putting three walls on a roof. That's pretty much it.
No, I agree, I agree, I'll just agree on that.
You're not, you're not gonna put an additional bathroom?
No, nope.
And you're not gonna...
It's actually gonna make it look a lot nicer, I think.
How many bedrooms in there now?
Just two.
Just two?
Yep.
So, he's taking the small bedroom, making it bigger, just expanding, all of the wall, over the bed.
Also, it's still only be two bedrooms?
Yes, yeah.
So, you maintain the two-bedroom status. No, I, I, I cannot have any complaints about it, I don't see much problem, no. Anybody else on the board?
No.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna ask you to take a seat, see if there's anybody that would like to speak on this application?
Thank you, sir.
Is there anybody here who would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this application? Or have a question on the application? Okay, this time here, I'd like to have a motion on the board, whether to vote on this tonight or not.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we vote on this tonight.
Okay, I have a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, at this time here, I'm gonna start the vote with Keith. How do you vote on this application?
I approve, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Denise?
Approve.
I also approve, Russ?
Approve.
Eddie?
Approve.
Okay. All right, uh, application's approved as presented. Okay, now, we're gonna revert back to our, uh, original application.
There's one more, the Penta Col, Colantonio?
Oh, I'm sorry. Get a record, please.
Owner applicant is Tracy Penta and Mark Colantonio. Location is AP thirty, lot one-one-zero-five, Hilltop Ave. Zone is R twenty, amendment of decision dated October fourth, two thousand seventeen, and recorded November eighth, two thousand seventeen, at book twenty-eighty-seven, pages twenty-two to twenty-five, to correct Scrivner's error pertaining to permitted height of accessory structure.
Okay, is the applicant here?
No, I, I did not ask the applicant to be here, it's, it's a typographical mistake. Um, I didn't figure he needed to be here to, to correct that.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we second the correction.
All right, you have a second, I have a second. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it. Okay, at this time here, I'd like to have a, a vote on this application to, uh, since it is a correction, to vote on this tonight, and I'm gonna do a roll call vote.
If we vote on it, we didn't handle it. We have to vote on it, we just vote on, just vote on the correction? I've never seen this.
I hadn't either, I think it was.
We allowed to, uh... I mean, there's no, this really is an exercise of paternity.
But you're, you're, you're allowing the, uh, you can vote it, cause you're just authorizing the chairman to correct a error in the decision, and the typing, my typing.
So, the motion is to correct the typo error.
And we did that.
We put a big name on it, that's it.
And I'll do a roll call on the vote, uh, I'll start off with you, Ed. I have a vote on this, Mr. Ed. Your vote approved is typo, Russ?
Approved the correction.
I also, Denise?
Approved the correction.
Keith?
Approved the correction, Jim.
Okay, correction's approved, as presented. Okay, at this time here, I'd like to go to the original application, which I don't see her even here. Yeah, you wanna continue this to next month? Were you able to get a hold of your witness?
She told me she had a meeting with the education department in Riverside, she's told it's not one of them, but she has a back thing, but she will, will make it her.
Would you like to continue this to next month?
Yes, please.
I have a motion to continue this from the applicant to next month. Do I have any? Okay, motion made, seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it.
Who, who seconded that motion?
For, for the record, date certain on the meeting is March fourth, twenty twenty.
Okay, do we have anything else for business time? I see nothing, I have a motion to adjourn. Hold, I have a second on that, second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's it, no nays. Motion to adjourn. April's question.